Plant.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, it's right, it's right.
More questions for Mary?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number 11, motion to approve of banning McKeel Oil Company Road, SR 1170, from the state maintenance system.
That's at Mount Olive. Pentecostal.
It is, so this was a request from the church, they sent this to DOT, there is an aerial map included in the packet, and you can see that the church owned properties on either side of that road, and I believe, Mary, don't they have room, they're planning an expansion or a construction project or something?
They're gonna build over top of it.
So they, they just wanna build across that road? And they, since they own both sides, there, there's no issue with that?
And all paperwork has been done, so.
DOT is approved.
That's a dead end road, too.
Yep, dead ends in the.
That's a rarity.
There's gonna be a building over top of it, I think. Yeah, yep.
Any more questions? Number 12, motion to approve a building and fire inspection service agreement between the county of Wayne and the town of Mount Olive.
And Mount Olive reached out to us several weeks ago, we have been doing the town of Mount Olive inspections, they are planning to bring on a level one inspector, so they'd like to take those on themselves, and those amount to basically residential inspections, so they would still need us for level two and level three building inspections, which are usually larger buildings, or they have multiple stories, which there wouldn't be many of those at all, in addition to that, I understand they just lost their fire chief that was doing the inspections, so they've asked for some assistance with fire inspections, we're, we're, do not have the capacity to, to do residential, but we are gonna be able to provide fire inspections for daycares, nursing homes, and foster homes, and those are the ones that usually have to be done annually.
Restaurants and all.
And Mount Olive has already approved this, they approved this, I believe, last week at their town meeting, so, and there, there is a, an hourly rate that they would have to reimburse the county for those services as well, and this mirrors the agreement that we have with some of the other municipalities that we handle.
That's drive time and all, correct?
It is, yep, drive time, and, and the town would be responsible for making any planning determinations, so they would have to certify to us that whatever is being built there is, is zoned correctly, and then we would go in and only do the inspections, we wouldn't handle any planning determinations, and that's similar to what we do with Pikeville and some other ones.
Does this agreement have any kind of timeline, or is it just?
It's indefinite at this point.
I don't know if they got a new fire chief or whatever.
But, but there is a provision that we can cancel upon a certain day's notice, so if, for example, we lose capacity, or we don't have the staffing, we can always tell them that we can no longer provide the services.
Any more questions on that? All right, moving on, number 13, motion to approve the conveyance of two easements to Duke Energy across lot six and seven in the Park East Industrial Park, subject to approval by the county manager and county attorney.
So this is lot seven in Park East, and if you recall, this is where North Carol, North Carolina Railroad is building that spur to go to Alianza, actually, the final design is complete, we're getting the surveyor to finish, just move a couple of little lines so we convey the lot seven spur over to them, and the bids for the construction of the spur have actually come back, while the final design was being determined, we were working with Duke, and if you recall, there's power lines that go across lot seven, so Duke was concerned that they wouldn't have access with the spur to go work on their power lines if anything were to come up, so they're requesting two easements, one is on the west side, and that runs on our property across lot six, but that also runs right across the drainage line and the gas line that's right there, so I, we asked them to move it as close as they could to that, so it wouldn't affect future development on lot six, or the sale of lot six. The east side Duke easement, the reason why that's necessary, even though to the east Duke owns that, that lot right there with their substation, there is a ditch that runs across that property, so they can't get trucks across their line right there, so they need access off Thoroughfare Road, so we've asked them to keep it as far east as they could from that spur, since we're gonna retain that property, and really, we can't develop back there, I do think that that east side Duke easement may move just a little bit, which is why I've asked for it to be contingent on county manager and county attorney approval. I don't suspect the lot six or the west side easement would change, I do think that that, that east side easement may change, because Duke is, they thought they had some, another easement going across Thoroughfare Road, but I, I think that that was not the case, so, they may need to change that just a smidge.
So, that section on the right-hand side of the east easement, that's the part that the county owns, correct?
Correct, well, the county owns the other side, too.
Okay.
That we own, 'cause the, the west side is on lot six, and then the east side is on lot seven, so we own all this property.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the little, small section on either side of the, either side of the, uh, power lines, yeah.
Mm-hmm, oh, yes.
So, so we were talking about it one time, about being able to use that possibly as a stacking, for, for cars and all, is that still a, a option? On either, I mean, you still have the easement in between that, correct?
Mm-hmm, you could.
Okay.
You would just need to have, you know, give Duke the availability to.
Yeah, right, to get in, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if, if that's, if this is right, there's a, there's poles right there, so that's gonna kinda limit.
And the other thing I'll add, too, there's a, there's a water line back there, and you can see there's a gas line, there's a lot of encroachment agreements that Duke's gotta work out with all those providers, so I, I would not be surprised if, if it moves a little bit to accommodate Wayne water and.
Well, that water line from Wayne water comes all the way to Park, comes all the way to Gateway, Gateway Drive.
It does, yeah, it runs all the way up that property line.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
On the west side.
Mm-hmm.
I'm still not understanding why they would need that easement.
'Cause, well, they need somewhere to access.
The power lines.
The power lines on the west side.
Well, I mean, but they got access all along there, where it crosses over, I read it's Gateway Drive, I'm not sure what the name of that street is, it's an easier access here, but they already have access to their power line, and they've got that, that easement for the power line there, but.
Well, if, if we were to sell lot seven, they wouldn't have access.
That's on this side of the railroad track.
Right.
Yeah, that's on.
So this is Chalene Court right here that's going down, Gateway Drive is further, is off the map.
That white, that white building at the bottom is Hoshikawa.
Right.
But on lot six, this easement will not affect the marketability of, of that lot in any way. Okay.
Because honestly, it, it, yeah, it is marked, so it's right next to the gas easement, and then it's also right next to the drainage easement, so, so it'll be the Duke easement, then the existing gas line, and then the drainage easement, which is a ditch.
'Cause the gas line comes up, and it turns in that little open section, but there's a, where the Chalene Court is to your left, that's the gas line that goes behind Park Imports, and then turns, comes up between them.
I agree, this doesn't actually indicate that entire easement that we gave for the gas, because that gas line does, in fact, turn in that clearing area that you kinda see there.
Okay.
But just in case they do come back with some changes, we wanna make sure, give, give the authority to, your manager the authority to.
So, wait, wait a minute, what, Joe's point, so how, how are we gonna access from the court, from the, how do we access it from the Chalene Court, that property, have we got enough?
Oh, I'm just playing around there.
Between the easements, it don't matter, okay.
Any more questions? All right, number 14, motion to approve the.
Excuse me, excuse me, just a moment.
Okay.
Are we retaining the right to actually cross that easement if, if need be?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
It's just an easement, we still own the property.
Okay, so we could cross over either the gas or, and/or the.
With asphalt, with asphalt drive, it might have.
Okay, all right, all right.
We just have to give them that access, that, that, um, access for their trucks to go back, or what.
Sure, 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 all right, thank you, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Number 14, motion to approve the 2025 Goldsboro Wayne Purple Heart Proclamation. All right, new business, 15, motion to approve the student resource officer memorandum of understanding with the Wayne County Board of Education for fiscal year 2025, '26, and the appropriate budget amendment. Number 16, motion.
Yeah, we go, we go ahead, we go ahead.
Yeah.
We go to that during the meeting.
Motion to approve a grant funding agreement between the county Wayne and Wayne County Public Library Foundation Incorporated.
Well, we'll do the same thing.
And Megan will be here, she texted me.
All right, we have public comments, each speaker will have a time limit of four minutes, county managers' report, or the commissioners' committee reports, have closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
We do it now, or?
Uh, we can wait, 'cause we have.
All right.
E and R.
Then we'll have adjournment, okay? We'll have a 8:30.
Madam Chair, if you want to recess for the next five minutes, that'll put you right on time for your. Technically, we're not allowed to do it before the posted time, but.
Yeah, they have to do it at 8:30.
In case anybody else wanted to show up, I don't, I don't know, I'll defer to Andrew on that, if.
I mean, this, they're hearing this as the board of commissioners, so we could go ahead and move forward with it now.
Okay, perfect.
This isn't, we didn't notice an 8:30 time for the E and R.
Okay.
'Cause it's not a formal E and R meeting.
So we can go ahead and open this up? Okay, Alan?
Good morning, thank you, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Today, we have a real property appeal for you to listen to today, we have Ms. Bill Ankeny here, who's from Mount Olive, and I just want to remind, I'm going to give a couple of brief statements, and then we'll ask Ms. Ankeny to come up and speak with you, and then TJ Smothers from our office, who is our revile coordinator, assistant administrator, will actually tell you from our side the story of what, what the value should be, and, but, this property is on the west side of Mount Olive, it's an eight tenths of an acre lot with a brick ranch style house built in 1982, and we currently have a value of 171,730 on it, and Ms. Ankeny was notified of that value, and she feels like that is not a correct value, so we're gonna let her come up and talk to you, explain her, her side of what, what she feels like the value should be, TJ will talk to you then, and it'll be up to you to decide what the value is, I would like to say one thing to Ms. Ankeny, if, while she's up here at the courthouse, if she'd like to stop by our office, I would like to talk to her about some potential exemptions we have available for her on the taxes, I don't know if she's aware of them or not, but I would like to talk to you about those before you leave today, okay?
All right.
What was the present, uh?
Uh, 171,730, 171,730.
What was the previous?
Oh, 2019 value was 126,460. According to this, and Ms. Ankeny can verify this, it looks like she purchased this property back in 2005 for 109,000, that's what our records indicate.
How many square feet is it?
It is 784 square feet, two bedroom, two bath.
Say again?
1784, two bedroom, two bath, brick ranch. And again, I just want to remind you, this, you know, law stated, as for this reappraisal, we are to put 100% market value on the property, that, that was our job, and that's what we're here today to establish the value, it's not any indication on the ability to pay the tax or anything like that, it's just to establish the market value of the property. You don't have any questions, I'll let Ms. Ankeny come up and talk to you.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, anyone who's gonna give evidence needs to be sworn, so Carol, I think, has a Bible, so we can go ahead and swear in the two witnesses, unless Alan, you're gonna talk more. Okay, and I did pass out a guide sheet for you all that outlines the procedure, so the appellant will come up, as she's getting ready to do, and present her case, and then you'll hear from the tax office, I did hear include the standard review for you all to make the decision, so you can read that, and then at the end of the presentation, you all will need to vote to confirm the value, to increase the value, or decrease the value, so those are your options, you can act on that today, or you can table this at a later date, that would be up to you all's decision.
Changed the two bedrooms, it dropped it down to 71. There is no value, but it would be, you talked about the bedroom difference, dropped down to 171.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, all I can say is, when I got this thing from him, and the taxes according to what my paper that I got through mail, it had 177,380, and I thought.
177 or 171?
My paper says 177, but he said that the reason they had it was because they had me a three-bedroom, which has never been a three-bedroom, it was built two bedrooms and two baths, and, you know.
The original notice was, like she said, 177, once we, she filed an informal appeal, we found out from her sheet that she thought it was a two-bedroom house, we corrected that, we changed the value to the 171, and she was sent a second notice about that, that value.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding correctly.
No, I've never got that one.
It was mailed, it was mailed out, mailed about 800 of them out, but it was once, that's the new value, 171.
So in your hand right now, you have the one that's 171,000?
The one I've got here is the one that I got in mail, that was 177.
Okay, is there additional one he just gave you?
No, this is what I, what I've had, you know, when.
She says she never received.
When I got this in mail, it was like, huh, I mean, it was like, how could my house go over $50,000 and increase?
The, the established value for you all to consider is the 171,730 right now, so.
But I've, I've not got that, because I did.
We can provide you with another notice of it.
But nothing has been done to my house, I mean, I've not, when I first bought the house, I put new windows in it, because it needed windows, but basically, and I did take off the garage door, because all the wind, it seemed like it rolled the trash, just blowed in, and so I took that roll-up door off, and I put regular doors, you know, there, but as far as increasing the size of the house, or doing anything, you know, I don't, I just, I think each one of y'all would have been the same way, if you got, noticed that your house had increased over 50, close to $51,000 in that length of time.
Well, that's what I understand, you said you closed in the garage with regular doors, like fridge doors type deal?
Well, the door that was there was that roll, was a roll-up door, and so that was the only way that you could get into the, you only had two doors, you either had to go to the front side of the house to go in, or go in through, you know, the carport, and I took that off and put regular doors there.
With like fridge door type deal in it, or?
Well, I put a door and two windows.
Oh, gotcha.
So, just a regular door, yeah.
Did you?
But it's, it's still ground level.
Right.
And there's so much moisture built up in there that you can't, because it's on cement.
I got you.
Evidently, they didn't do what they were supposed to when they built the carport, to keep the moisture from coming through that cement, because if you put vinyl rug in there, it milled used mold so bad that you can't, you know, so. And I've tried everything I could to stop it, but, doesn't what people told me I could do to keep it from coming in, but it's, I've not had much luck at it. But I just, I just can't figure out why the house, being as old as it is, how it could increase that kind of money.
Has any subdivisions, new subdivisions come in around this property or anything, so it's just?
There's, there's nothing but cornfield in the front of me, and soybeans all around me, there used to highway, and that's it.
That looks like my house.
You can dust today, and you can go back tomorrow and write your name on whatever 's in your house, because it's in the country. But now, I love the country, I was born and raised in the country, on the farm, so.
Me, too. Anything else, Ms. Ankeny?
Ms. Ankeny, are you aware of what homes are selling for right now in your area, the comparables?
Well, I called some of my neighbors, and that's them, and none, none of them that I talked to, their value had gone, like mine had gone, now, one of my friends, I said, well, don't you say anything about it, and she said, well, I'm too afraid to, and I thought, so you just sit back and just let them do whatever they want to do, and I just, I prayed and prayed and prayed, and I said, God, help me, let your will be done today, 'cause we're all gonna give an account to him one day, for each one. Now, I do try my very best to take care of my property, because it is God's land, it's not our land, it's God's land, he lets us use it, he gives us the breath to breathe every day, and I do try to keep my yard looking as good as I can, I even crossed the highway, where it belongs to a farmer over there, and I moved where the power poles and all these little meter boxes and all this stuff is, because there's so many fire ants out there, that when they come to check their stuff, they can be covered up in fire ants before you know it, in the fire ant season, so I do keep all that mode in the front of my house, and I guess people thinks, well, why in the world that old woman gets out there and does that, but, I look at it, God's earth.
That comes up to like, little, just a little more than $96 a square foot.
You, you purchased your home in 2005?
2005, my husband, my previous husband had passed away in 2004, and we lived in the country in Duplin County, and I just had been to Newton Grove, to, I think, Hog Slats, and I'd come back on that little road one day, and saw that sign out there, said for sale, and I passed by, and like a little boy said, go back and look, because I was having to move off of the farm, and I went back, and I looked at it, and called a man, and he kinda filled to me, and told me this little piece of land went with it, and then the farmer come along, a week or two later, and says, Miss Joanne, you put that little building on part of my property, I said, what are you talking about? I said, the man that sold it, taking care of the house, he said it went with the land, with the house, he said, well, I'm sorry, but it doesn't, so I paid him rent until he passed away a few years back, tried to buy it off of his wife, and she said, and it's not even a half acre, probably more or less like a quarter of an acre, but.
If you were to sell your home today, do you believe you could get more than 109,000 for it?
I wouldn't want to rob anybody, because like I said, all I've done to it basically is, is I did put new windows in it, but the windows, the new vinyl windows, but being in the country, it is hard, hard, hard to keep them windows clean.
What do you believe it's valued at? What do you think it's worth? In, in 2019, it was, tax value was 126,460, so if you were to tax value your home in 2025, what would you value it at?
Nothing, nothing like this, nothing like this, because if somebody else buys it, I'm 84 years old.
Do you have insurance?
Sir?
Do you have insurance on your home?
Yes, I do.
What do you value your insurance of your home at?
I can't even tell you that, because.
If you had to rebuild it, if something unfortunately happened to it, and you had to rebuild, if, if there was a fire or an accident, and you lost your home, you had to rebuild it, what would you ask your insurance if it had to be rebuilt today?
I haven't looked at that thing lately, I know it's extremely high every year that I have to pay it.
Right.
And I know that that's what they, you know, and then when they told me that I had three bedrooms, I'm like, huh? I said, I've been there 20 years, and ain't been able to find that third bedroom if there's one here, and so, and they said it was on, what, I think they told me it was on the computer, something about it, there was three, it was a three, three-bedroom house, I said, y'all go by what somebody put on my computer, instead of going out there and looking at the thing, or, you know.
Do you have any evidence you can provide us as to why we should not allow this current rea, a tax evaluation to stand, or why we should reduce it, 'cause one of the standards is looking at, what can you provide us to show us that we need to devalue it, as you're asking, and that this is not correct, do you have anything you can share with us, other than how you see it?
Well, I can ask y'all the same question, can you tell me why, what, why the value of that house has gone from what this tells me, that's over $50,000?
I think that's what TJ will do.
That's what he'll do.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed the landing.
So how, all of a sudden, has, has my property, my little piece of, that little house there, how come it is, has gone so much higher than when I asked my neighbors about theirs, theirs hadn't gone that, now, I'm not saying everybody, because I can't, you know, I don't ask everybody, but why all of a sudden, that one little house sitting there?
I could speak from personal experience on daddy's, my daddy's house, I guess his might have been undervalued, because his almost doubled, and his is probably 100 years old, so it might have been undervalued, through the tax department, not any fault to anybody, just, just, you know, for what it was, but if you had to rebuild that house today, it would cost, it would cost a lot of money, it would cost a whole lot more, 170 some thousand dollars, I would dare say it would cost, every bit of 275 to 300.
It would cost 300, I know that's hard to believe, and I'm with you, I, I mean, you and I have both experienced prices just skyrocket, but in real estate and in construction, it has, in some cases, doubled just in the last decade, and it's, it, it's shocking, it's really, it really is shocking, but, but hopefully, we're going to hear, and, and I'm a little bit surprised that our tax office hasn't shared with you some of the comps, because what they use basically are comparable homes in your area, and those that have sold, so hopefully, we're going to hear in regards to some comparable properties that have sold to give us some idea of the value per square foot that would be in your area.
Well, I can tell you that the, my next-door neighbor down, I went to church at the, and that was the parsonage for the church, they sold that house for $50,000, much bigger house than mine, but the man, he was a contractor, and he went there, and he done a bunch of work, and he sold it to a lady to build Latter Days, where she bought it, because she told me what she had to pay for that thing, he got it, bought it from the church for $50,000. He turned around, done a little bit of work to it, and he, I, I can't remember, I think it was 200, it was way over 200 and something, that she had to pay for it.
Shocking, I know.
And she bought it to, for like a retirement home for seniors and, you know, people like that, and that's what it is now.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, Ms. Ankeny? Thank you, Ms. Ankeny.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, as Alan stated, I'm TJ Smothers, I work down in the tax office as a revaluation coordinator, and, and we're here to establish fair market value as of January 1st, 2025, so we've appraised Ms. Ankeny's house as a schedule of values that was adopted by the, by the board of commissioners here, and our, you know. And our, you know, the manila folder that you have here, just the very first page is her property tax card. And you see highlighted in yellow is, is the price that Alan was talking about, $170, $1730. The second page is just a front-view photograph of her home. And then the third, and what I would like to talk about is what we, what helps us establish some values is we have a computer program called Comper. And it picks the four most comparable properties in 2024. And just like a fee appraiser, it makes adjustments for square footage, year built, land value, bedrooms and bathrooms. And it came, after it makes all this, all this computations and subtractions and everything, there's a value right here in the, on the second page in the upper left-hand corner of $171,600. So that kind of validates our, what our value is of $171,730. So really, that is, that is based on the, you know, comparables that we use. Like, there's four comparables that we use. They're all within five miles of our home. If there's any questions on those comparables, I'll be glad to answer them. But other than that, in conclusion, basically, the schedule of values we use, and with the Comper backing, we, we feel that the $171,730 is a fair market value as of $1125.
So Mr. Smothers, if I'm looking at this right, so within five miles of this property, you looked at sales.
Yes, sir.
So the low sale was $155,000, and the high sale was $175,000.
That's after the adjustments, yes, sir.
And if I could ask, from looking at this, and this is done basically as an outside appraiser would actually do it, and that is, you've got comps and you've made adjustments. But based upon that, your average is $171,600.
Yes, sir.
Would you, would you agree that, would you agree that it'd be possible to actually reduce this value to $171,600? From the $171,730?
I mean, we certainly could, yes, sir.
Did you have discussions with Ms. Carnegie over this?
We attempted to contact her, and I, we left several voicemails, and we drove out to the house.
Okay, so you all didn't have a conference or anything? I think we normally do try to meet with the tax, taxpayer and try to come to some conclusion, but you were not able to have an actual meeting?
No, sir, was not.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
No questions?
I have one. Ms. Carnegie, with your property, did you have it appraised independently? Or have you done any work to have it appraised or anything on your?
And what are some of the remedies that could take place to help alleviate some of the tax burden that she could have?
Alan said he was going to try to talk to her this morning and talk about some of the programs we have.
Yes, sir, that's, that's one thing I wanted, Ms. Carnegie, since she's here to come to our office. We're going to discuss our eligibility exemption potentially. I'm not sure what her circumstances are, but because there is an income limit on that program. But I want to go over all the programs we have available that may help her on the tax paying side of it.
Ms. Carnegie, are you willing to speak with him and see what kind of exemptions you may be qualified for?
I tell him that I live wherever, I don't know where he's located, and I don't understand why they keep saying, because if they had a... The only thing that what I've got is got in mail. And then I come up here to the courthouse two or three times to ask them, you know, who I could speak to. I even come back last week, I think it was, and go to ask them in the tax office, would they give me a list of what they, I had paid the taxes on my house every year from the time that I bought it. But she only dated it back to 2013, I think it was. She didn't give me the, you know, when I bought it in 2005. And so, but I've been back and forth up here because, I mean, goes bar two or three times a week. But I don't know where their office is at, and I don't know why I haven't been able to, you know.
It's right, it's right downstairs when you first come in, and I'm sure they could walk you down when we leave this proceeding. But it's, if they're willing to help you in, you know, certain capacities, I think it's worth it, you know?
Well, I just, it just blows my mind that a house could go from what it was valued at, and it had been going, like I said, it had been going up, you know, but I had not questioned that because, you know, it's not out of reason. But when you send somebody a statement that their house value has gone that much, if I had gone in there and I had done a bunch of work to it or whatever, you know, in the last, say, 10 years. I remarried 10 years ago, and we've not done anything to it.
I understand, but the...
Now, I did do the work before, you know, before we got married, and I just, you know. And I, I know that everybody that's sitting in this building here today, if you got a statement saying that your house had increased over $50,000, it would blow your mind also. Now, if I had increased it, if I had been along to it or done a bunch of work to it, but it needs some work done to it.
Well, I think overall, not just you, but all of the state of North Carolina has went through reevaluations. Everybody's property has went up. But we don't want you to have a big burden, you know, we don't know what your budget consists of. That's why I definitely want you to go and see, see our tax administrator and see if there's something he can do for you.
It's just... I did, I did a quick calculations on the comps. And an average of the per square foot for what the values are was $108.02 over across the four comps that they got in this paper. And if you take that and times it by 1784, it should be at $192,707. So I think the $170, my opinion, I think the $171 is fair, but I understand. I questioned daddy's, I questioned my daddy's property as well, but...
Okay. Any more questions?
I got one for Alan. This, her house was on the books for the three bedrooms, and there's only two. How many other ones in the county might be messed up like that?
I asked that same question. I said, "Why do you not..."
I mean, there may be, there may be someone that's got two bedrooms and this actually got three. I mean, it can go either way.
Yes, that's, that's correct. That's very correct. And what we have to do with, with her size house and every size house of that size, I have, we have 1,200 square foot houses that have three bedrooms. So we, we don't go in every house in Wayne County. We've not been inside. So we have to do our best, that's based on the size of the house. And this was done back in 1982, potentially, when the house was built. So we have not been into all the houses in Wayne County. And so, but like you said, it can be just Sweets the other way. We could have two and they could have three.
Well, how long has she paid taxes on a three-bedroom house?
I'd have to look back and see, Ms. Acock.
Be something to look at, how long she's been paying.
But again, like Mr. Acock said, it could, we have people the other way around too, where they've been paying not enough profit potentially.
Ms. Carnegie, go with Alan and let him work through some things. I know there's got to be something there for you to help you and everything. And y'all sit down and look at everything that we have here and talk with Mr. Lutkin. I think he can probably do something for you, if you will go with him and everything, and y'all discuss this and everything.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before, before this board makes a decision on anything, is it possible that they can go and discuss the matter, and then maybe we can bring it back on another date?
You can table it until your next meeting. That would be fine. But in terms of the evidence that you consider, you're limited to what you've heard here today.
What is...
Now, the, now the exemptions are something separate than what you consider.
Agreed.
The exemptions reduce the amount that a taxpayer has to pay. So there's statutory guidelines on what the appraised value is reduced to that will reduce a bill. That's not something that's considered today. You're just looking at the appraised full value that the tax office has set. That is determined, the exemption is determined by statute. And then if they qualify, then the tax office would approve that. If the application is late, then it could always come to the board of commissioners for you all to approve, which you regularly do just about at every meeting.
What would be the procedure for determining the outcome of this hearing as such?
So you, you would have an option to confirm the tax value, to increase the value if you saw fit based off the evidence that you saw, or decrease the value based off the evidence you saw today? And I, I would point out that on the second page, I pointed out some types of evidence that are in, in property here during these, one of which would be hearsay. I know that, you know, that we've talked about some conversations that people have had. There needs to be formal documentation of an appraisal, of sales, of something of that nature, for you all to properly consider that evidence. So hearsay evidence would not be appropriate.
So would it be in order for one of the commissioners to make a motion?
Correct, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
I move that we decrease the value based upon the evidence that we have provided to us in regards to a market analysis and reduce the value to $171,600.
Okay, we got a second. Rest of the board? Do you vote?
Do we vote?
Everybody vote manually, please.
I just want to make sure of something before we vote. Is that a clear aggregate? You said you listed it as a three-bedroom, correct? But it's a two-bedroom.
There's only two bedrooms. That house was built with two bedrooms.
That $171 is the accurate value of her, her house with the two bedrooms and not the three?
It is.
I just want to make sure it's on her side because she's been...
She did an informal appeal, and when she did the informal appeal, staff went out and confirmed that it was two bedrooms, so they corrected that.
And it was off of $178 to $171 at that time, unless it was corrected.
Madam Chair, I, I understand, you know, what, what we're looking at. But I think it might have been you that asked a question. How long has she been paying tax on a three-bedroom house?
Irregardless of how long she's paid, it's up to the taxpayer to look at their data and to verify that. But if she, if it was overpaid, we could go back to five years and refund any difference. Five years is the max. It doesn't matter if it was five years or 50 years.
I think that a courtesy that, that needs to be done.
We were going to do that when we got, that's part of the thing we're going to talk about when we go downstairs.
Okay.
But how am I supposed to know that they're charging me for a three-bedroom house if they don't go out there and they don't look at the house? When I went in downstairs to the tax place, I told them, I said, "You're welcome to my house. Go in my house. Just let me know so that I can be there, so you can go in and you can see what's the house was built."
Ms. Carnegie, you can print this here, have them print this out for you. It gives you a description of how many bedrooms and everything on here for you. They can provide that for you at the tax office.
But don't they need that before they do all this tax value? Don't they, don't they need to know instead of me, need to know what they're taxing these people?
I think, I think what happened is, Alan said a while ago, when the house was built back in whatever year it was, that's what it come, that's what it showed.
No, it didn't show that.
It, when they built the house, when they inspected it, that's what it, what it showed based on, based on what we're, what we were being told. I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about when the house was built.
Mr. Carl Warren built that house when he was living. He was a single man. He had married earlier in life, but he decided that, that wasn't the life for him, and he went back to the farm that his mom and dad was on. I didn't know him, but I've had neighbors to tell me what a good man he was. And he built that house, two bedrooms.
Madam Chair, may we vote on the motion?
Yes.
A living room, dining room, and a kitchen.
Ms. Carnegie, we got a vote on the floor here, all right? Can we vote, please?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
All right, the, the motion on the floor is to decrease the value to $171,600 based on the evidence presented. And everybody, by show of hands, who votes for the motion, raise your right hand, please. All right, and those against? All right, motion fails.
You know, I'm not saying that we, that it can't be changed, but I think the first step needs to be, she needs to go down and talk to Alan in the tax office and, and get it straightened out, then we have a better idea on, on, you know, we can always vote on it again. But I just, I think the first thing that needs to be done is for her to go down to the tax office and talk to him and, and see what he can do and, and advise her, and, you know, if it needs to come back before us.
Well, if, there's still a decision to be made since that failed. So at, at this point, you all either need to confirm, confirm the value or increase the value. So whatever discussion she had, she has with Mr. Lumpkin would just be on the exemptions. It wouldn't be on the issue that's in front of you. So you can table this to the next meeting, that's fine, but you still have a decision to be made on the pending question.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to confirm the tax value as set by the tax office. Ms. Carnegie, I don't feel like you have presented your case well and showed evidence that what the tax office has valued it at based on comparables. Because you've, you've not, you've not done your due diligence, and I appreciate you coming here. My values have gone up too, but you've not done your due diligence to this board.
What is my due diligence?
Provide us with some evidence as to what you believe that it is. Provide us with, provide us with an appraisal on your side to show us what it's worth.
Have you, have they provided me telling me that the value of my house could go that much?
I'm not going to argue with you. You've received the notice.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say this. I, I voted against because I wanted you to speak with Mr. Al, Mr. Al about it. That's the only reason why I voted against it, not that I don't think your value should be decreased. I think it should be, just based off of being a three-bedroom, two-bedroom, some of the mistakes that are made, just different things. But I was hoping that we could table this and bring it back on our next meeting and vote then, was my thing that I was trying to do. I, I agree with Commissioner Acock on that. I, I don't think it's something that we have to do right now. I think waiting two weeks would be perfectly fine with me.
We can't consider that. The only evidence we can consider is what's presented today.
Then if we want to consider the evidence today, we can vote on that. I'll vote against it. I'm voting against it regardless, and then we can vote again. I will go back to the original if that's the case. If we have to vote on something. I was only delaying my vote was because I wanted to wait on some other, some other things and let them kind of sort of settle that. But I agree with Commissioner Darche on lowering it, if that's, if that's what we have to do.
Well, we voted on the, the corrected tax value of $171. That's what we just voted on, because that's what the tax value was, $171.
But $171,600, and that motion failed. We now have a motion to validate the $171,730.
Correct. That's the motion that's on the floor now.
Uh-huh, yeah.
That's, we won't lower it by $130.
That's correct.
To what incomparable.
So we do have a motion on the floor. We're prepared to vote on that, Madam Chair?
So you got a motion?
Yes. Could you repeat your?
Motion to confirm the tax value of $171,730 as set by the tax office.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. So how you vote?
Did you get a second?
You don't need a second.
So, all right, can we clarify? So all those in favor, raise your right hand? And then all opposed? So that motion passes five to two. And just for the board's information, Mr. Lumpkin will send Ms. Carnegie notice of today's proceedings, what the confirmed value are, is on the property, and if she wishes to appeal this further. And then it'll, then it'll show you how you can do that, and you can... and you can appeal it to the state. And all those instructions will be on the notice that Alan provides.
But she's going down to talk to Alan.
But yes, but I would still recommend that you speak to him about the exemptions as well, to lower that tax bill.
Madam Chair, can we recess?
Thank you. Can we recess for about five minutes?
Thank you, Ms. Carnegie.
Good morning. I call the August 5, 2025 regular board meeting. My invocation today is by me, Barbara Acock. Will you please bow your head? "Lord, I come before you seeking your divine strength to face this day. Grant me the courage to overcome obstacles and religious to persist when faced with adversary. We pray for our country to be at peace and come back to God. Amen." Emancipation, uh, pledge allegiance by Commissioner Dalton.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Dalton. All right, I have, do I have a motion to approve the July 15, 2025 minutes?
Aye, aye.
Have a motion on the floor? All those who approve, please raise your hand.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion passed. Seven to zero.
Commissioner. All right. Mr. Crumpler, do we have an adjustment?
I think we just have one additional budget amendment, which was number 26. We went over in pre-agenda. That's the only addition to the agenda.
Okay.
And also to pull number 33.
That replaces three.
Oh, does? Okay.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the adjusted agenda?
So moved.
Motion on the floor to approve the agenda?
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Crumpler.
All right, we move on to special presentations, and item number three will be a presentation of the distribution check from the Wayne County ABC Board General Manager, Darnay Bearfield.
Yes, please come up.
I mean, it seems like you were only here the other day.
It seems like this is a regular thing.
We like it.
I was thinking you don't come often enough.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Fellow Commissioners, I'm glad to be back again to make our distribution to Wayne County going forward, and our distribution today is $110,500. So, things have been looking good and going our way. We appreciate, or I appreciate, and the board appreciates what you all do for us and helping us move things along. We are in the process of hopefully getting this store going in Rosewood. A few hurdles we've had to jump and looking at some other projects. One out here at the business park, getting it underway for our new warehouse and office complex, and y'all been very instrumental in that, and it's progressing forward. So, that will only keep these coming for the county. So, if y'all have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer them. If not, I'll make this to our Madam Chairman, and we'll go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to go on down and accept that check?
Yes, sir.
What changes is mine?
Afraid I can't change my mind. The statute has it said for me.
All right, y'all have a good one.
Always like to set things like that.
We always like to applaud for it.
All righty, moving along, under special presentations, item number four is a presentation by the NCU Summit Delegate, Samir Tina Hayrow.
Good morning.
Good morning, Wayne County Commissioners. My name is Samir Tina Jarrow. I'm the current Council 4-H president. I'm honored to stand before you today as the president of Wayne County 4-H County Council to share how 4-H has shaped my life and continues to impact our community. For those unfamiliar, 4-H is a youth development organization, part of the NC Cooperative Extension Service, that empowers young people through hands-on learning leadership opportunities. The 4-H is stand for Head, Heart, Hands, and Health. Representing our commitment to youth development, 4-H has honestly become like a second family to me. It's given me a space where I feel supported, encouraged, and heard. Before 4-H, I wasn't always a person to speak up or take the lead. But through clubs, leadership roles, and just being around people who believe in me, I found my voice. That's actually what brought me here today because of 4-H. I've gained the confidence to take on new challenges and represent my county at this year's Youth Voice Conference. I'm really excited to keep learning and growing with all of you and to take everything we do here back to my community. Thank you for your time, and I'm excited to be attending the Youth Voice Conference and hope to see you at the Youth Investment Breakfast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good morning.
Good morning.
He can just stand here and acknowledge. I'm sorry.
Come on, guys.
He can come up here.
So, you want to come up here? Michelle, do you want to stand right there? You want to stand up? Yeah, stand up.
We're going to stand up behind you.
Appreciate what you do. Appreciate what you do. Thank you very much.
Were you taking a movie?
And Samir, several of the Commissioners will be at the conference, so I'm glad to get an opportunity to see you there as well.
I'm sure we'll have a great discussion.
See you there.
See you there.
And I just wanted to say, I was in 4-H many, many, many years ago, and I am so proud of that it's still going on and y'all participating in what you're doing. I mean, it means a lot. It means, you know, to have the youth like you going in the right direction, because a lot of kids don't have that opportunity. And we certainly appreciate y'all participating in it like you do.
We left off three meetings, by the way.
Michelle, I'd like you to mention about the ladies that we participated with last week.
Yes, thank you.
Michelle had some ladies, young ladies, and they were coached in different... I'll let you tell what they were coached in.
Well, thank you. Last week, I still try to recover. Last week, we worked with ten girls, from 12 to 14-year-olds, and they learn about cooking, they learn about physical activity, how to take care of their skin, finances, how to budget. So, this program, it was possible because of extension and community association. So, basically with our Christmas bazaar, they raised funds to be able to do all this because it's a very expensive program. We have, we work with them three days from 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night. So, it's a long day. We feed them all day long. But Commissioner Barbara, she helped us on Monday. So, we have different, five, six, six ladies, professionals with professions that are not very common for women. So, what we wanted to do to empower those girls, that whatever you want to be in life, you can do it. So, I was so happy that Commissioner Barbara was there because the girls were like, "Wow, I can't believe that she is a Commissioner," and, you know, she talked about her experiences. We also have a pilot. We have somebody from the community college. So, we have different people talking to the girls.
And a truck driver.
A truck driver, yes. So, we tried to do our best to empower the girls and be sure that they feel like, you know, that we care about them, that the community is there to care about them.
And they asked some hard questions, too.
Oh, yes, they did. I'm glad I was not part of the panel.
Thank you, too.
Thank you. You have a wonderful day.
All right, Madam Chair, moving along, we move to our Appointment Committee. Yes, Madam Chair, we have a motion today to appoint Rory Creach to the Mount Ottawa Planning Board.
Have a motion on the floor?
Additionally, we have a motion to reappoint John Belabou, Dural Coley, and Eddie Long to the Wayne Executive Jetport Commission.
Motion on the floor?
Those against?
And lastly, we have a motion to appoint David B. Jackson to the Fork Township Sanitary District, filling the vacancy left by Tony McCabe as recommended by the board.
Motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dalton. Unfinished business?
Moving on to unfinished business, if that's all with appointments, we'll have a motion to approve the revised First Amendment to the existing economic development agreement between the City of Goldsboro and the County of Wayne regarding properties in the Park East Industrial Park. And I think Andrew has some more information on that.
This is a different version of the agreement, the amendment that you all approved at your last meeting. Just to back up and give you some background so you're familiar, this involves the shell building and the inter-local agreement we have with the City of Goldsboro. It states that the city will provide utilities out to that parcel, but agree not to annex. And in exchange, we split our tax revenues from that parcel. I was under the impression that the city approved this as presented. It turns out when it went to their meet, to council in June... Um, it turns out when it went to their meet, to council in June, um, one sentence was added at the request of City Council. That wasn't communicated with me, so I'm bringing it back now. That request is still, the amendment is still the same. There's language that says, "The county shall provide an accounting of all taxes received for the parcel on a semi-annual basis on July one and then again on January fifth and continuing each year thereafter." So they're just asking us to provide an accounting of the taxes we have received on the parcel. That's not a big deal, that's all public record anyway and can be searched online, but that, that's what council added and was approved. So for that change to be adopted, it needed to come back to you.
Are you good with that change?
I am, I mean, that, that's no problem at all, the tax office, it's just a matter of them printing out a few pages of reports and sending it. Um, any, any member of the public can access the same thing online.
But we're still, we're keeping all our investment for taxes.
We are, that, that part has not changed. We, but they still forego their split, um, until we recoup the two point five million, approximately two point five million dollars.
I mean, I have no problem with it, the only question I have is, why would they want it every six months? Uh, because we only receive our taxes generally once a year.
That was communicated.
That was communicated?
I, I told them we will not have a report come July one, we won't have a report July one.
It'll be the same report that we had before, but if, that's what they want, I don't wanna change it.
And there, there won't be, yes, we won't have a report until next year sometime.
Whatever, thank you. So there's no way that, I mean, just, there's no way this thing can be null and void if we don't provide a report? I mean, if we provide a blank piece of paper, it is what it is, correct?
I mean, there's no report for July, there won't be one for January fifteenth because the property for next year, because as of January one, we own the property, the property is not being taxed.
And you pretty much relayed that to them, they still wanna keep it like it is?
We, we won't have a, anything to present to them until twenty twenty-seven.
Got you. And they, they're, they're aware of that?
Mm-hmm, they are.
Madam Chair, I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve?
Okay, thank you for that vote. And moving on now, I'd like to get approval for our consent agenda that was discussed at our briefing. So moved.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner O'Carroll. From Commissioner O'Carroll.
Was then, no, six, past six to one.
Thank you for that vote. Uh, moving on now to new business, item number fifteen is a motion to approve the Student Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding with the Wayne County Board of Education for fiscal years twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and appropriate, and with the appropriate budget amendment.
The Sheriff's here, but I'll go over the agreement, he can provide some details about coverage or any, answer any other questions you have about the program. But generally, we have a three-year contract with the schools to provide SRO services. So the contract lays out, um, what coverage we will provide at the schools throughout the county, the hourly rate and reimbursement, um, what the schools will pay us on an annual basis for the program, and the roles and responsibilities of the schools as well as the, um, the Sheriff's Office. For example, what the deputies can and cannot do, what information they can and cannot access of the students. Um, the majority of the language is the same from the previous version. Um, we didn't need a new contract because, one, the old contract expired at the end of June, so we need one for this upcoming. But also, if you recall, you all approved five hundred thousand dollars in additional funding in the budget. Um, so we had to address coverage and how that, those funds would be allocated across the county, those extra funds. Um, I put together a summary, um, before the agreement that provides a summary of the coverage. Um, so where one SRO will be assigned individually, um, where there's gonna be a joint SRO, and that would be at Greenwood Middle and Meadow Lane, Granton Middle and Granton Elementary, Rosewood Middle and Rosewood Elementary, and then contention on funding and staffing, there's a list there where we will have a rotating. Um, and then down at the bottom of the page, I also have a total summary of the budget. So your budget is approximately two point two million dollars. You can see the amount of the grant that we would be receiving from Wayne County, Wayne County Public Schools, which is approximately a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And then the net cost to the county, which is a little over, um, two million.
So I, I want that...
Oh, yes, okay, I see it.
I want that clear, that the county, Wayne County, is putting two, two million seventy-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty cent in their school resource office program. And we getting seven hundred and nine...
Andy, are my numbers correct?
Is that number correct, I'm sorry.
It does not look like it, now that I'm looking at it.
On that.
Andy sent me a summary, I can...
Yeah, that should be a little less.
Yeah, I did not.
If you got two point two to start off with and subtract seven hundred... That's with the five hundred thousand plus, that's with the five hundred thousand and nine.
I put you back down to two million two eighty-seven.
So my first number is incorrect?
Right.
Okay, it should be two point seven eight seven.
Is the total program before grant funding is applied.
Got you, two million seven hundred eighty-seven thousand. So if that's the case...
So the net cost to the county is two point oh.
Huh?
It's two million seven...
Two million seven hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Just over two million dollars.
Okay, so if it's two point seven and we getting seven oh nine, or two point seven, is that included in the, is that the five hundred thousand add, okay?
Yes, that's everything, I'm sorry, I was hypo on my part.
So we're putting two, we're putting over two million dollars in the program. Correct. We're putting over two million dollars in school resource officers program. Correct. Say it louder, say it here, come back here.
How many, how many schools do we like having one at all, schools?
It's that first section right there.
Twelve?
I mean...
You have, you have one assigned full-time at twelve, and then you have one jointly at two, four, six. So you have continuous at eighteen schools.
And we're gonna, and we're gonna put probably three more the first year with the extra fund. The first year, and then after that, we can add. So we'll have even, we'll have more than that once we get people hired. After this goes through, then you could, the Sheriff can start his process of hiring the, uh, additional officers.
I think it's important to, well, thank you to the Commission Board for funding this, thank you to the Sheriff. The city has a few officers as well. But how long it takes to get someone in a school as an SRO, that's about a two-year process, isn't it? Hiring, training, getting certified as a school resource officer takes about two years. So I think the Commission Board needs to also understand that as we allocate these funds to do this, it's not an instant thing, that the next business day, the Sheriff's able to hire an officer or place a deputy in there, still has to be training and it takes up to two years to get someone in this, in the building to do this.
My concern is that, um, you know, we're still gonna have gaps with, at some of these schools, some of these schools aren't gonna have, um, SROs consistently. What I would like to see, and, um, I discussed this with our manager and this board, at one point, we, we, we had Evolve come, come and, um, they did a presentation. We need to consider if we can get Evolve to cover some of those schools that we don't have SROs. They're willing to, uh, put a unit in there free of charge, just so we can do a trial. I mean, I think it'd be a great thing for the schools that aren't covered full-time. So I'd like to see that, I mean, I want our kids to be safe. And I think this board does as well, so those are the things that we, we need to try to work on. You know, it's great that we do have all this, these resources for SROs covering, uh, majority of our schools, but there's some schools that are still gonna be vulnerable.
How long is the trial for, Commissioner?
Once we get, you know, they're, they're willing to do it for, for us, free of charge.
I think Johnston County went that route and they, they have since pulled back, pulled back on, you know? Because it's actually, you got the, the, uh, actual, uh, school employee has to be the one that is actually doing the, uh, looking at the screen. So it actually is gonna actually add more people to do that job than it is to have a school resource officer there.
Well, I mean, I think that's where we, we had an issue initially, um, um, when we had this, when we had Evolve come and present. I think that, you know, me and you, we were kinda, had a little tug-of-war based on what your beliefs were in regard to the system. The system, if the system works well at stadiums and, and venues, I'm sure it could work well in our school system. And if we don't have SROs, but we do have staff already present, why not use them? You know, I don't see, I don't see it as a negative, I see it as a positive.
Madam Chair, as my understanding in earlier discussions, that the city was in fact providing some of these SROs, am I correct in that? They are providing... Is it two or three?
Is it three right now? Golds, Goldsboro High School, Wayne School of Engineer, which they were gonna move Wayne School of Engineer into Eastern Wayne Middle.
Yep, and then Dillard. And Dillard, Dillard and Carver, or was it, what is it, Carver, Carver, what's, what is it?
Carver Heights.
Carver Heights, yes, Carver, Carver, I guess.
I'm not sure what the final decision was by the Chief, uh, whether he was gonna cover one school or, excuse me, two schools with one officer or if he was gonna try to have three schools covered completely.
Well, the, the, the purpose of our discussion that day was for the city, um, Police Department to provide SROs to the schools within the city. And we were gonna start on the outside and move our way in. Uh, the, what he told us to date that meeting is that when he's, uh, I asked him how many people did he have within the city on shift, he said thirteen. And then the next, he, then he said, well, I've actually got seven, thirteen when he's fully staffed. But even then, you're in a concentrated area, how many miles we got, five hundred what?
Five hundred sixty square miles.
With how many deputies at the time?
Eight.
With eight deputies covering that much, and then to see, I don't know what the city's square mileage is, but you got, you understand what I'm saying, you can actually get to them quicker, so we move them that way in. Uh, so the last I heard from the s, report from the city council meeting is that his, uh, well, I think it was, it was in the Wayne Week, I think is what it was, that he was going to, uh, his, his, uh, he was going to try to move forward to try to put them in there, but I guess the city council's got to give them money to put them there.
Now, Mr. Cruppler, if you could, give us some clarification on what, what they have agreed to do.
But based on what we're hearing right now, it's Goldsboro and they're moving the one that we had at Eastern Wayne Middle, they're moving the Wayne School of Engineering to, uh, Eastern Wayne Middle. And then they're gonna do Dillard, and supposedly do Dillard and Corv, is it Corv or Carver Heights?
Carver Heights.
Carver Heights. I think that's right, Ben.
Yes.
That's right, okay, yeah, that's the last that we've heard, so. Okay.
We, we were told the only Goldsboro, um, campuses we need to cover are the ones on the list right here. So Wayne Middle High Academy, Greenwood and Meadow Lane, and then a floating presence at Eastern Wayne Elementary and North Drive Elementary. That everything else would be covered. I don't, with the number of, I don't know how, but this is what we were asked to cover.
Well, there's some, there's some discussion on that, so we can get a clarification on it. But we're, based on what, anyway, we, we, I think we got a few more schools covered than that.
Well, when we get the other people hired...
Right, right, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, this for the general public's, uh, information. Uh, when we're talking school resource officers, these officers duties, Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, these officers' duty is to, uh, not only protect the students from, uh, outside intruders, but, uh, you know, in some of the schools, we have a behavioral problem with the students. Uh, and, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus or for accusing anybody of anything, but you know, uh, times has changed. Attitude of some of the students in the, in the schools are completely different from what they were when I was in school back in the sixties. Uh, but these school resource officers is really playing a dual role. Am I not correct?
They play a lot of roles, uh, from being a pastor to a parent to a counselor. It is a tremendous job they have. Um, and initially on a behavioral problem, we are there if they break the general statute, but we try to let the school's behavior specialists handle it first, in the school administration. Uh, but after, if it escalates past that, then we sometimes have to step in internally. But that is, uh, you have to be a special person to be a school resource officer.
I could imagine. So I, I'm still, I still think we got more covered than this because used to part-time people as well, correct?
We will be cut, we, we are basically, once we get the other people hired, as a general rule, have full coverage on these schools by some means.
Means, okay, I got you, okay. Not to discourage the city to do their part, to continue to, to move forward.
Because it, it's gonna take all of our part-time people rotating, as well as our supervisors, uh, trying to cover all this, but, um...
Okay, and I thought, I mean, my numbers and those numbers don't add up, so that's, just wanna make sure, okay?
With the exception of one that we have talked about.
I think it's important with school, safety, and resources, because we know that our resources are finite. We do not have an unlimited pot of funds. There's a lot of data out there that shows, uh, national databases on acts of school violence, active shooters, uh, potential of which schools see those more than others. Do you elementary schools, it tends to be outside coming in. Middle schools tend to be your safest schools in America when you look at the data. High schools, it tends to be the needle in the haystack, or sporting event, things there. So I would encourage us, as we look at things like Evolve or resource officers, it might be relevant to make a data-driven decision on with a limited amount of resources, where can you get the most impact with what statistics tells us? Doesn't mean something can't happen everywhere, but there is a national si, a database out there that has catalogued every act of mass violence in a school since it first started, unfortunately. But that's very revealing when you look at it, to see what these cases were over and where they happened. So I would just encourage us to look at the data as we think about resources we're gonna use and where to put them to get the most bang for the buck. But thank you for what you do, Sheriff, and thank you for the officers.
And I, I have people ask me, why don't you just go ahead and put a resource officer in every school? And I tell them, I said, you know, that's easier said than done. And I said, you know, those officers have got, got to be paid, they've got to have a vehicle to go and come from. And I said, you know, I said, we don't have a rent for us. You know, we got to, we got to work with what we've got.
And to address or to, uh, amplify what, uh, Commissioner was saying, um, a school resource officer, to be certified as a school resource officer, has to have a minimum of one-year general certification. So that, that's, that's the first year you got to have that. And then we, of course, as I say, kind of handpick who goes into schools or try to, because it is, they have to have CIT training, which is the critical anal, analysis of people and how to, how to deal with people with behavioral problems. And so we have a lot of training they have to go through before we really want them to be a certified resource officer.
And the biggest safety measure that we can ever do is make sure what we already have is implemented, the doors are closed and locked. For a lot of things, we already have safety measures there, if we just use what we have.
Yeah, not a rock inside to, to keep it open, yeah. Agreed. And lock the gate, and lock the gates when, when I turn to school, yeah, yeah.
Madam Chair, we will be looking for, uh, a motion to approve this memorandum.
Do we need to, do we need to correct the, the figure eleven?
That was just a summary.
Okay, okay.
That was just a summary, that's not part of the agreement, that's something I put together just for discussion, so it, it's correct in the agreement.
All right.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we adopt the, uh, uh, School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding with the county school system.
With appropriate...
With appropriate budget memo.
A motion on the floor?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously.
Thank you for that vote. Moving on to number sixteen is a motion to approve a grant funding agreement between the County of Wayne and the Wayne County Public Library Foundation Incorporated.
And Megan's here if you have any questions too.
Right.
Yes, okay. I'm making sure that was you. I couldn't see. So over the last couple of months, as you're aware, the foundation is a nonprofit that supports the operations of the library. I know that they helped out with our bookmobile. They help out with the Bedora Gardens and other projects. There has not been ever a formal agreement between the two, between the library and then the foundation as to how they will, the procedures by which they'll fund it. Sometimes the library foundation will pay a county vendor directly, or sometimes they'll issue a check to the county. That can lead to issues because maybe a contractor doesn't know who's responsible for the project. And obviously, that's just not how we run grants to the county. So we approached the foundation about just formalizing a process by which the county would request a grant. And most, we wanted to make sure that they were comfortable with it. So what we came, what we put together with the foundation is on a project-by-project basis, when the library needs those funds or would like to move forward with a donation from the foundation, they'll make a formal proposal to the foundation, including an itemized budget and just a brief project summary of it. And then the foundation will look at it, review it, take it to their board, see if they are in agreement. And then they would issue the grant to the county. And then at the end, we would provide all financial documentation to how the money was spent back down to the foundation. And any unused monies would be returned to the foundation for future projects.
Madam Chair, I only had one question.
Okay.
And that is item three dot six. Assist in transferring the foundation's square point-of-sale payment account to the control of the foundation.
So for a long time, um, the library actually had access to the square account. You know, when someone makes a donation on their phone, it's the little white square and they would swipe the card. We had access to that, so we're just transferring that authority over to the foundation to make sure that none of our employees are accepting funds on behalf of the foundation, nor does it look like that we're, you know, part of the foundation. And we just want to make sure that they're separate entities, so if people are donating, they know exactly who they're donating to and so that there's no confusion.
I think this is great that we finally are getting this agreement.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You need a motion?
Send a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you for that vote. Uh, moving along now, we'll go to our public comments section. Each speaker will have a time limit of four minutes. Have we had anybody to sign up?
Yes, sir, we do. The first individual that has signed up is a Mr. Carl Martin. I might say need to have a copy of that as well. Do you have eight copies?
There's ten.
There's ten, perfect. If you'll hold just a moment, I need to see, give that to our manager and I also need to set the time clock, so. Nope, that's not here. Bear with me. Don't, don't need that. My heavens, where is it? There it is. Thank you. I'm so sorry. All right, sir, you're set.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Carl Martin and I'm a property owner resident in Goldsboro and I pay both city and county property taxes. I looked at the twenty twenty-five to twenty-six annual approved budgets for the city of Goldsboro and Wayne County and came across some things I'd like to comment on. In the copy of the attached Wayne County Board of Commissioners' mission statement, there is a highlighted objective with this in the section titled Long-Term Objectives. It reads as follows. Provide accessibility for all citizens to educational, recreational, cultural activities through creative planning and improved communications. When I read that, I was baffled because I couldn't think of where there is any Wayne County accessibility to recreational activities outside of the city of Goldsboro. So I researched the web to see what I could find. I found that Wayne County does not have a department that is dedicated to recreational facilities or activities in Wayne County. I also found that all but one of the six counties surrounding Wayne has a property and recreational department. Under the Wayne County Community Website Section, there is a tab titled Parks, but it only provides information regarding Cliffs of the Noose, which is a state park. The county website section does have a link to the website for the city of Goldsboro. There I found that Goldsboro has a Parks and Recreation Department. And there are eleven parks, two greenways, two pools, a multi-sports complex with a splash pad and an eighteen-hole golf course that is available to Goldsboro residents and to the other residents in Wayne County. I looked through the annual twenty twenty-five to twenty-six budget to see what, if any, amount of the twenty-six million dollars approved was funded to address the long-term objective of providing accessibility to recreational activities. I did not find where there was any funds budgeted or approved. When I looked at the city of Goldsboro's ninety-three-point-seven-million-dollar annual budget for twenty twenty-five to twenty-six, I saw that over four million dollars was funded to the city's Parks and Recreation Department. My research therefore leads me to conclude that almost all of the Wayne County accessible recreational activities and facilities are being provided by and funded by the taxpaying property owners in the city of Goldsboro. If the Board of Commissioners are sincere about accomplishing your recreational long-term objective, then I say show us. By providing some of the twenty-six million dollar budgeted, twenty-six million dollar budgeted dollars towards helping to fund the recreational activities and facilities that are now and have been provided mostly by the Goldsboro property damage, property taxpaying citizens. If you refuse to do so, then I'll be saying what they would say in Texas about your mission statement's long-term objective, and that is all hat and no cattle. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. One quick question, Mr. Martin. In your research, did you find any counties that participate in their recreation within the city or have recreation that they're funding?
The only county that I found that did not have a Parks and Recreation Department was Wilson County. And Wilson County, the city of Wilson, has a Parks and Recreation Department. So I didn't go in-depth with my research there, but it appears that they have a situation which is somewhat similar to the situation here in Wayne County.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Martin, I would like to state, I'm not sure if you knew about this, but this board did approve, I advocated for Aquatic Center and they did, the board, the previous board did approve it, but it's been on standstill, so we haven't had any movement. But that is something that we advocated for to get to Wayne, you know, for Wayne and Goldsboro.
Great.
I don't remember approving Aquatic Center.
Yeah, we approved it.
Talking about it.
We approved it, but we just haven't had any movement on it.
Great, because I live in District Six of the city and we have no park for recreation in that area. And the excuse that I get from the city is we don't have any money in order to do anything about that. So maybe that's something that the county could consider since part of my district, I believe, is, uh, or covered by a county commissioner who could advocate on our behalf of that.
Yes, sir. And I just want to make a, a statement, I'm not, but to correct it. It was, it was a goal, Aquatic Center was a goal.
It was throwing our budget and goals retreat.
It was a goal. It was a goal that was one of the goals that were, we talked about. We said that we would further look into, as a county, we haven't put any money into it nor have we voted to actually approve it or to build one. So within your standing, we are correct that we don't do anything in recreation right now. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
And I want to make it clear that during our budget and goals retreat, I advocated for that program and the board supported it. And we just, we're at standstill at this point.
Like I say, show me.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Anybody else?
Yes, we have two more. First, Ms. Emma Hamilton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a PowerPoint that we'd like to present.
We have to have a four-day notice for PowerPoints because of viruses and stuff. I'm sorry, we've had virus issues lately and that's why we do the four-day to clear out viruses or check for the viruses to go into our system. I'm so sorry. But I think you can make your message.
Did you want to pass this out to the board?
Well, we also have pictures attached to it, so.
I, I understand, but we do have to have.
No, I'm sorry, on the.
Oh, okay. Yes, maybe you can paste those out, yes.
We have to have.
But I think you ladies can make a good presentation.
All right, Ms. Hamilton, your time starts now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Emma B. Hamilton. I'm here today to discuss community concerns regarding Lakewood Estates Avenue road conditions. And this is with me is Mrs. Alan Mason, who is a resident also of that area. We are concerned regarding the increasingly problematic conditions of the main artery to our subdivision, Lakewood Avenue. Some of us have lived here since its inception and never has the road had any maintenance in fifty-seven-plus years. Occasionally, someone would patch the potholes with concrete or asphalt. We approached the State Department in nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and five seeking state maintenance. However, we needed two more occupied homes on the street. Now that we've gotten the needed occupied homes, two thousand and twenty-four, we went back to see what to do. At this time, we were told that we must bring the street up to standard, then the state would take over and maintain it. This seems ridiculous that we homeowners should be responsible for bringing it up to par, particularly when nothing has ever been done. Over the past several years, but especially in recent months, these issues have grown in both size and severity, affecting not only the comfort and safety of everyday travel, but also the broader well-being and connectivity of our community. To begin with, it has become evident that Lakewood Avenue is suffering from significant wear and neglect. Potholes have become an all-too-common sight, some of which have reached sizes large enough to pose a genuine hazard to vehicles and pedestrians alike. Cracks have widened, asphalt has eroded. Currently, there are several areas of concern on Lakewood Avenue that should the size of erosion continue to grow, the possibility of collapse is imminent. If the road collapses, there would be no way in or out of the subdivision. Additionally, the lack of regular maintenance has led to poor drainage in several places. After heavy rains, water accumulates, creating the dangerous driving conditions and hastening the deterioration of the road being. In addition to the wear and tear from age, common, common use and weather-related events, the southeastern Wayne Water District has added to the severe deterioration of the road. They have cut and dug up the asphalt in several areas of the road to maintain their water lines. The concrete driveway and asphalt of every home on the right-hand side of the road on Lakewood Avenue has been cut and dug up to install water pipes. County water systems enhancement over the last several years has further compromised the stability and structure of the road. These enhancements would probably not be an issue if the roads were properly maintained by the county or state. The consequences of deteriorating road conditions are far-reaching. For residents, these issues translate into daily inconveniences, increased wear and tear on vehicles, and higher repair bills. Many of us live in constant anxiety about what will happen if the road does collapse. There will be no way in or out of the neighborhood. This would affect essential services such as fire and rescue, trash pickup, delivery trucks and mail carriers. I am alone in these concerns. Over the past few months, I have spoken with many neighbors and other homeowners who share my frustration. There is consensus that the current situation is unacceptable and that urgent coordinated action is needed. Ultimately, the roads we travel on every day are more than just a means of getting from one place to another. They are the arteries of our community, essential to both our collective prosperity and our daily lives. We owe it to ourselves and to future generations to ensure that they are safe, reliable and well-maintained. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter and for your continuous service to our community. I hope that we can well see meaningful improvements, that we will see meaningful improvements soon. Should you require further feedback, we have my number and, um, everything there.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you.
Any questions, Ms. Hamilton?
Ms. Hamilton, um, the, the neighborhood as a whole, how many people support the roadwork being done?
Um, so, we have, what, twelve of the, that road.
Yes, ma'am.
We got signatures from everyone. I have some of the neighbors here with me today, right there. But we have signatures of everybody that's on something done there. It's not just the one time. And we, I must say, we've been to the state several times. And at one point, we were here in nineteen ninety-nine, I have an article on that, that we had a big hole that had developed on the edge. And the county took care of that for us back, I think, in early two thousand. That did, that, I have my newspaper article and everything that we came, we had to come to get help. That way they didn't get, you know, it was the same thing, deterioration. But like I said, that, the road, the, the main road that leads into Lakewood and around, you have to get to everything else, that's the one that's going down. That's the one, that's where we would have problems. There's other problems, but that one, the big problem.
Yes, ma'am. You have school buses going in there too, don't you?
Yes.
Pick up children. This is Lakewood Estates.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Still, do we know who initially did that subdivision and paid the road?
Not off the top of my head, sir.
Okay.
It's quite old. Goes back before my time. It's been in disrepair as long as I can remember.
Ms. Hamilton, how many years?
It is a private street, so.
How many years have you lived there, Ms. Hamilton?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven years.
Since nineteen sixty-eight, in the same place.
What was the process again for us, you know, repairing the roads and then letting the state take, take it over?
The homeowners have to pay for it. We don't have any avenue to pay or repair roads on. We don't have any avenue to pay or repair roads, own roads or maintain roads in North Carolina. Counties are not allowed, only towns and the State of North Carolina Department of Transportation.
And that payment, what was the process with the payment? Was that?
It's based upon engineering survey and, uh, estimates. And, and those can vary. You'd have to make an expenditure to find out what it would take to bring the neighborhood up to standard to today's standard, which is what DOT is requiring.
That would be several.
Would that be, would that be, would that be added to the property taxes of those homeowners, or?
It would be added to them over a course of, they, if you elected, it'd be a ten-year repayment.
Would that be something that, that that community would be willing to do?
But the majority of the people, uh, owners in that neighborhood are aging, but they've been in there fifty-seven years old, about fifty-seven year plus.
Yeah.
Um, I don't see how they would take on that type of burden. I don't know how much it would cost to bring it back up to par.
Millions.
Yeah, to bring it up to par, that's the concern.
That's right.
Once, you know, something's assessed, but to bring it up to par. How, when, and when nothing's ever been done, then the, it was, that it's established in nineteen sixty-eight, uh, sixty-seven, sixty-nine, something like that. And nothing's ever been done to that portion, well, well, now, one portion of it is state-maintained, Lincoln Drive. It's state-maintained, but it stops right there. You come in and it stops, and it's at the crossroads, and it doesn't go anywhere.
So, it comes off of, so it's, so Lakewood Avenue up to Lincoln Drive is state-maintained?
Mm-hmm.
And that's state-maintained up there? Ma'am?
About a block.
About a block, yeah. Is Lincoln Drive state-maintained, Ms. Hamilton? On both sides.
On both sides of Lincoln Drive.
So, from there back that way, well, you can look on the map, too.
You sit on the shovel store soon, you should pass Lincoln Drive and get to that next intersection everywhere, that's where I am. That's where you, you get other places, that's where the streets are cracked.
That's whoever developed it, didn't, didn't build it to state standards at the time.
At the time, it was built, it was built to standards at that time.
Yeah.
But it's, ever since, there's been no maintenance, because we're not allowed to do maintenance. And we don't even have them, you know, I mean, the counties are not, in North Carolina, we're not, we don't have that power or authority.
And there lies one of the fallacies of that program. The program was the developer built it to state standards, but there's a requirement stating that you've got to have so many residents own that road to petition the state to take it over. And in some cases, it would take thirty, forty years to get the number of residents, and all during this time, it deteriorated. Then you get to the point forty years later that you've got the number of residents, but the road has deteriorated so badly, it would cost those residents so much money just to bring it up to the current standards. And that's where we are now. And it's, this is just a, an issue that the State of North Carolina has, not only in your community, but throughout the state. Uh, and it's a, it's a sad thing, but it is the responsibility of the property owners to maintain that street until it's taken over by the state. And that's, I know you don't wanna hear it, but that's, that's basically what it is.
And that's not the only neighborhood suffering from.
It is not, it is not. Now, that said, I'm an old man, and I, I remember things sparingly now. But one of the things that I recall is there is an exemption on certain roads in subdivisions that were in place before nineteen seventy-four.
That's correct.
Is, am I correct?
That's correct.
You're correct, but its interpretation has been modified to.
Maintain.
To make, for, make, they're not accepting maintenance on them any longer. They, they interpret that rule.
So, they've changed the interpretation.
In my opinion, they have.
The, the state division of highways has changed that interpretation.
You're saying we can't be grandfathered in since it was?
Well, I, that's what I was asking.
Originally, it was anything prior to seventy-four was grandfathered in, but now, gone back to them with several. And, or Barry has.
Everybody's got, everybody on that street has got, has got the sign for it. I mean, we, there's one off of, um, Thoroughfare Road, that just one person didn't sign, that they wouldn't take it.
Well, when you say it's signed for, you mean sign, check on the responsibility, it's for paying for it?
Sign for them to, for the state to actually maintain it, because they'd have to go in there to, to, to bring it up, the maintenance. That's been, that's been several years ago now. Especially what Chip said, is they've changed it since then.
Their interpretation has changed. I don't know that any laws have changed, they just, they're not willing. At one time, you could get that passed, but it seems harder to do today.
Ms. Hamilton, do you know if there's anything in your property deed that might state whose responsibility it is, or whoever developed this might have a say in it?
Problem is probably the developer's past. I got an idea who it was, but I didn't wanna say, but I think that person's.
You're thinking, you're thinking the same thing I'm thinking.
Yeah.
And I think they, the originally developer, something happened, it changed hands two or three times, being developed.
Yes, ma'am.
This fellow from South Carolina, they've developed, but they're developing, and then Jeff Wells and.
I, I was beginning to say, I think that was a Jeff Wells development, and that's the case, he's definitely passed.
And then it was Calvin Hodger, or something.
Well, we appreciate you bringing it to us, but unfortunately, there's much, there's not much we really can do.
But can you tell us what our next, what our next step could possibly be?
Well, I think if you, a- and I think if you, if the community, if they were willing to take on that responsibility as far as the taxes on that, then I think that, that would probably be the option. Get, Ms. Hamilton.
From thirty years of dealing with these streets, you're better off to pool your money together and hire a private road contractor to go repair the street. It'll be a lot less money. When you get, when you go through that tax program, everything has to be built to current standards. When you hire a paving contractor to go in there and repair, you can just be repairing it and leaving it as a private road. You, as a citizen, have that authority. If you get us involved, it inflates the price, and it'll cost thousands and thousands and thousands per property owner to bring it up, 'cause we got to recut the ditches, we got to reset utilities. The road bed was not put down correctly, the type of soil base they used was not the same.
The cobras ain't right.
It's pretty much a rebuild, and.
Any brick.
I have several neighborhoods that have done it on their own, and it was much more affordable than, uh, when they, when they ended up checking into it.
And to give you an example of that, we had a subdivision that went through that process, and their assessment per lot was sixteen, a little over sixteen.
Eighteen thousand, I think.
Yeah. Eighteen thousand?
Over the course of ten years.
Again, my memory tells me, but sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars per lot to bring those roads up to the current state standards. And that just, uh, they wish they, I'm, I'm sure, wish they probably went back and said, let me just go back and do it privately. Create a homeowners association, and it'll be a lot less, a lo- a lot more affordable by doing it within your community.
That's the issue, though. Nobody wants to do a homeowners association until you need it, till you got a problem.
That's correct.
Nobody wants to pay dues until they got an issue. That's the problem that we've got on some of these other subdivisions.
And the subdivisions you have today have homeowners associations. It's the ones like this, that was not even thought of forty years ago, fifty years ago, or whatever, so.
I, I, that's what I would do. I would suggest that you get a homeowners association, create that in order to tackle the problem.
Not ideal, but unfortunately, that's the hand we're dealt. That was also brought up, and say, we, as a county commission, years ago, made that a legislative issue, and it was presented, and the legislature looked at making changes, and they made changes to newer subdivisions that were coming online, but not anything that existing, so it didn't help this particular situation, which it aggravates me because I don't think it's fair, and, uh, I think DOT has a responsibility to serve those streets. If they want to take control of all the road network, then I think they should take control of it. So, I'll probably get in trouble for saying that, but, um, that's just my opinion, so. Thank y'all for coming.
Yeah, Ms. Hamilton, thank you so much for.
Thank you for listening to us.
Absolutely.
Hopefully something, I'll pick you five minutes with, some of the, get a windfall.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have that another?
Um, in our final, um, public comments individual is a Mr. Melvin Taft, T-A-F-T.
Mr. Taft?
I realize this morning, now, first, I thank you for, uh, for you all being here, and thank you for allowing me to be here. And I realize I can't hear very good, so I may be speaking too loud. If I am, just, just tell me.
You're fine.
Anyway, the, uh, the reason I'm here is because of the budget that, that you all have adopted. And, uh, it's been educational to be here and, and see how open you are to listening. But I've talked to, I first read about this in the newspaper, uh, about a month ago or so, when it was in the paper. And that, that was kind of alarming to me, and I called Ms. Barbara there and talked with her, and she helped me clarify a few things that the paper actually had recorded wrongly, uh, which was a big help. It's, uh, and I, and listening to the concerns about the, uh, school here this morning, and the resource officers, and the, um, in the airport, the hangar that you all are proposing to build over there, and then a maintenance barn to keep up the county vehicles, um, I gotta, I'm gonna run down this list right quick, so I don't use up my time, and I'll tell you the things that are concerning to me. Is, uh, I've talked to a number of business owners, and, and I, I run a small business, and, uh, I get over the whole county and even out beyond that. But I've talked to twenty-five or thirty business owners, uh, and these guys are not pop stars like me, most of them are millionaires. But none of them have an airplane, and they don't have any friends that have airplanes that are gonna be flying in. We don't think we need it and don't want it. In listening to this thing with the resource officers, and then with this maintenance barn, I think it's gonna cost about eight hundred thousand dollars. That's one point eight million that could go toward the schools. The students need to be protected in the, in the school system. Education is the key to getting us where we need to go. You all are the governing body of the county. You co- you hold the purse strings, uh, but you're out of touch with the county, with the people. This is what I spoke a few years ago about. People don't know you. I wouldn't know you. They don't even know what district they live in. They've not been made aware. I wouldn't know Antonio Williams if I'd have met him on the street or anywhere. Had to look it all up for myself and see who you are. I got some suggestions and some good ideas about how to make things better. I don't like just castles. I, I'm about solving problems and issues, and I believe there's a lot of people in this county, especially business owners, that would like to help. In my neighborhood, I'm from the south side. You've talked to two people from the north side. I'm from the south side. A lot of people say when you drive across that bridge going south, News River, you just drive off into hell. And for a big part of it, they're right, but I live over there, uh, and a lot of these people that I know do. I, yesterday, well, I'm back up to twenty-twenty. In my little neighborhood, we had no less than fifty dogs running through there, and I'm serious. I got to know Graham Price and David Brown on a first-name basis, and I got their phone number in my thing now. About two weeks ago, we finally got the last dog. Finally. Five years to get the dogs, and it cost me a night in jail and being arrested at gunpoint by the sheriff's department to get it done. I did nothing wrong, but I still got locked up. It's wrong. We got mobile homes stacked on top of one another. They stacked in there like cordwood, and they're being moved in and out, and moved in, no permitting, just do like they wanna do. We got building going on, and I don't see how Antonio cannot know about it if he lives down there, riding back and forth. I can take you and show you. This construction going on. There's no code, there's no bill, there's no permits out. Okay? I'm out of time.
I just wanna ask you a question, 'cause you mentioned my name a couple of times. You said, uh, why I shouldn't know about what permits.
The what?
Why, what, what permits should I, what non-permits should I know about?
If you drive in and out down there.
In and out of where?
You live in District Five, Mount Olive, right?
I, I, I don't live in Mount Olive.
Sir?
I live in the city of Goldsboro, but Mount Olive is part of my district, yes.
Okay, well, then, do you get down there very often?
I get down there as much as I'm able to, yes.
What is that frequency?
I'm sorry?
What is that frequency?
I don't understand.
How often?
I, I get down there when I need to get there, when I'm, when, when I'm called on matters that make me go down there, then I go down there. I can't travel down there. That's not my job, just they have their own municipality there, they have their own elected officials there. We are a governing body. We do something a little different than the municipalities of Mount Olive.
Oh, I understand, but, but District Five, that covers Dudley and Marmack, does it not?
I'm not District Five. That's District Five.
Who is District Five?
I'm four.
Okay.
I'm four.
Four, alright, so here, here we go. Anyway, you've got building going on there. It's Haitian building code, Mexican building code, it's not state building code. Uh, I've talked with Jeff Spira to try to get him to come to look at some of the issues that would concern code enforcement. He, and this has been three months ago. He can't get there because he's now over here on the north side, helping with the building permits, people.
Sorry, your time's up. I'm sorry, your time's up.
Okay.
Mr. Taft, before you leave, do you have a phone number, address that you can leave with Mr. Neil, or someone that you can give to us?
Yes, sir.
And then, I know you spoke to us, but do you have anything in writing you might could leave with us to list your concerns?
If somebody can make a copy of this, I'll be glad to leave it.
Yes, sir, 'cause I would like to, I would like to see that.
Okay.
His address and phone number.
So, we've got your address and phone number.
Okay.
Okay, and if I could have a copy of your concerns, I would like to read them.
Would you, uh, how long are y'all gonna last, or can I speak with you afterward, or what are you saying?
Can you, can anybody make?
Five or ten minutes.
Five or ten?
Five, ten minutes, five, ten minutes.
We've got closed session, though, too, don't we, Mr.?
We do.
We have closed sessions, I'm not, I'll call you.
Okay, thank you.
No comments from the manager.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I had, um, just wanna comment on our summer employment program. Um, it was a beautiful banquet that we had. I wanna thank all our staff that participated in it, all the kids that participated in it. I, I'd like to see again the program, uh, grow. Uh, we had a lot of applicants that, um, couldn't, uh, get jobs this year. And, um, if it was up to me, I would give every one of them a job. But, um, it's a process. I'm hoping that we have more departments that, uh, wanna get involved each year. And, um, hoping a lot of the, the young people definitely come back and, um, decide to make Wayne County government a job for them. Also, I want to let the teachers know, I know kids are gonna be going back to school soon. I have a lot of, um, hand sanitizer, so if it's a daycare center, it's a, if it's a middle school, high school, teachers just, uh, send me an email, and we can set up, um, a timeframe where you can come and pick up boxes of, uh, hand sanitizer. That'll save you a little. That'll save you a little bit of money, keep your, your kids a little bit healthy with cold seasons and everything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Drucke?
No comment.
Commissioner Hiccup?
Yes, ma'am. I attend a Southeastern Middle Home College. Breakfast gone a couple, three weeks ago. Had a good turnout, and we're so blessed to have that facility in Wayne County, that in Kitty Atkins. Also, the chair called me the other day to see if I could go to the Purple Heart banquet. I talked to Brian Vogt, and he was unaware of my health issues. And I told him I would be there if it was humid as possible. But I was not able to attend. And I apologize to Barbara for not going, but I just, I was not having a good day that day. And Brian understood. But I did, I did make an effort, but I just couldn't, I just couldn't make it. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Gura?
Yes, ma'am. Make sure I'm correct on this. Any, all of our county properties, no one is allowed to do anything on our county properties unless authorized by Facility Director Kendall Lee or the county manager. Is that correct? Or is any kind of building, your construction, whatever?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. Any kind, anything for that matter?
Anything.
Got it. All right, that has, that needs to be in writing, correct? That they're allowed to do something. They've got to bring it before, before.
I'm not sure what you're.
It would depend on the request. I think certain requests.
Yeah, it would take my authority to allow you to do it.
Right, okay, all right.
You've got to look at the liability on that, too.
Yeah. That'll work. Next thing is I got a, I got a call from Ms. Yvonne Stanley last week, week four last. And she's concerned about when they enter on the main road with their no stop sign. And I told her that I would, I would mention it at the commissioners meeting, and I would mention it to DOT to see if there was something that's in the state right of way that needs to be done. So I'm just gonna bring that up because I told her that that's what I was gonna do, and I told her I'd call her back, so. Unless, Chip, you want me to call, you want me to call?
I'll take whatever directive you do.
I'll take your, I'll take.
Be glad to.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Herr?
No comment, manager.
Mr. Foster?
No comment.
I have nothing. We have closed session?
We do, and it would be to consult with your attorney employed by the board to retain attorney-client privilege and to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries in the county.
Okay. I'm asking the room to be cleared?
I'll move. We're going closer.
A motion and a vote.
I'll move. We're going closer.
Okay, hold tight.
All right, we lie back, we're ready to dismiss. The adjutor moving closed.